February the 11th, 2020. Going to ask if there is a motion to reopen our meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner. Richardson, I am sorry. Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima, all in favor? Chinya.
McFadden.
There are six and three absent. Okay. Seven and three absent. I'm going to ask if you are, as you're able, if you would please stand as we have the presentation of colors. We want to thank the JROTC from Reach Partnership High School. We had Cadet Devon Gibbs, Cadet Janiah Jones, Cadet Malcolm Lanier, Cadet Robert Montgomery, Cadet Melissa Lanier. Again, thank you to Reach Partnership High School. I'd like a motion now to approve the prior open session minutes. Commissioner Brooks, there's a second. Commissioner Richardson. And this one is.
Without the student.
The open session student may vote. So it's everyone. Okay, may all in favor? Chinya.
McFadden.
That's seven and three absent. And now I need a motion to approve the closed session summaries. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brooks, second by Commissioner Bondima. All those in favor?
Richardson.
Chinya.
McFadden.
That's six in favor. Seven in favor, two absent. Okay, all right. I'm going to do something that I sometimes did when I was a teacher in a classroom. I let my students know what kind of day I was having. So I'm going to let you all know that for some reason leap year has really, and the month has touched me today. So I'm trying to stay focused, but if I seem a little jumbled, blame it on February. We have, for my comments really, is I want to just share some good news as I introduce our guest this evening. Hopefully you all saw a recent Newsweek magazine. I know that our CEO has mentioned it where it talked about the 500 best high schools in America for STEM. And in that article, we were really happy to see that there were 15 high schools in Maryland. One of them was actually from Baltimore City, Baltimore's Polytechnic Institute, which was ranked, I believe, number 36 in the country. But one in Maryland. And so with that in mind, I'd like us to welcome this evening Kate McGuire of the Maryland Science Olympiad. And that's an organization which supports and highlights the benefits of strong STEM programming. She's here to share some things with us. Thank you.
To I ran into at the choice fair who had suggested that I tell you what's going on with Science Olympiad. Thank you. Could you pass the clip? Can you turn this? Yep. Thanks. So for introduction, what makes a great STEM program has been studied by a lot of people, including you, over nationally. And I'm Officer in Society of Women Engineers. We have heavily looked at this in terms of how to be impactful with girls. There's four elements you see report after report after report. The kids need to be interested in what you're doing in an after-school or out-of-school context. You wanted to have them develop a skill, any skill, that makes them feel confident that they can learn and master a skill on their own. The third item is that they need to have an experience that makes them aspire, whether it's to a career or whether it's to going back in the classroom and doing a little better. And again, a key part of having STEM programs that reinforce the education they have is the continued experiences year after year. So Science Olympiad is the foremost program in the country for 37 years. It's a, that is a multi-disciplined science after-school program. It's based on tournaments and it's in 48 states, 150,000 students across the country, and it's for teachers by teachers. It relies on competing to bring out the engagement. It aligns closely with schoolwork all over the national next-gen science standards, math, and reading. And it is, a key tenant is teacher growth. For the Baltimore region, we've done over 100 teacher training points this year. We've been in each of the systemic training programs and that is, City Schools has offered, and we have our own training. We're very excited this year that we had eight years ago, four teams. This year, we have 33 city teams, which is super exciting. We've grown from four high schools to 10 high schools this year, and we have 23 middle school teams, one of which is the awesome Hollibird School, who is sitting next to me. I'm going to tell you more. Just as an introduction, the unusual thing about Science Olympiad is they first get to choose one of up to 17 topics. And in that topic, they're not told what to do. They're given a wide latitude to be inventive and innovative and use their initiative. So for instance, we do bottle rockets numbers of years. And this example I have in the slides, these are Baltimore City students. They were all given a challenge in a one-liter empty bottle and said, build a rocket that flies the longest time of anybody. The young man in the upper right worked with his partner, and he built super big wings because he said, the longest time, I want to slow it on the way down. I want to have it go a long time to go down. I want it to glide. The young woman on the lower right, or excuse me, lower left, had a different idea. She made a super-long nose because she wanted to go as high as possible. She's reducing the drag on the nose, and if it goes the highest possible, it might take longer to go down. On the right, that young man wanted it to go really straight and not wobble a lot, not have a lot of loss. So he put huge fins on it. And the lower right, that young woman has a nose that has three different layers because she said it should never deform. All of those ideas are right, and all of those ideas have been used in actual rockets. And those are our students from Baltimore City coming up with all those great ideas. This slide is just your virtual experience of being at the tournament. In the upper left, we have over 100 Morgan State STEM major students who come out and help run all 17 events. That one is an egg drop, and that's the Society of Women Engineers from Morgan, with whom, after this, I am going to do a dinner event. The upper right is an example of doing a build event. These students can have their families there, they can have their teammates there, they can have the other teams also there. So they, it's very much a community event. We have a variety of events. So the lower right is showing some robots. We also are, we're doing video games this year. The lower left, we have chemistry events every year, forensics, solving a mystery. So a wide range of events. This is your science curriculum in one chart. The IQIS science curriculum for sixth, seventh grade and eighth grade has, for each grade, four modules, one in chemistry, life, physical, and earth science. And in those little orange boxes that nobody can read is names of different events that we have at the tournament that the children can choose. So what's exciting is that we cover virtually 80 to 90% of every topic covered in sixth, seventh, and eighth in our city schools. And the second thing that's exciting is it takes it a step farther. For instance, they'll learn about heating up a water and cooling water. They'll think about the rates, they'll think about how much energy. But in Science Olympiad, they're asked to build an insulated box and then predict between a number of five and 20 minutes how much the water, the hot water will cool when put in their box. So there's a number of skills wrapped up in that, and it's taking it one step farther. Obviously, from my examples, you've been able to see that there's math. We have a lot of reading materials on each of these activities and that it ties to their science and curriculums and tech curriculums. I'm going to end by saying you are all invited to our tournament. March 7th, we're going to have 300 students from 23 schools, as I mentioned. We have the mayor coming, and we have David Wilson, the head of Morgan, which is our eighth year there, and they get more excited because we keep bringing more kids. So if you can't make the awards, feel free to come by to the gym and watch different activities. Or as Dr. Santa Lisa had done with her daughters, come and say they want to witness an activity, and she actually got to talk to students doing it. So with that introduction, I wanted to have each of the children talk about their view of Science Olympiad.
Do you want to? No, you got to start. She's starting.
I can start.
Lisa can start.
Yeah, I'm going to start. So hi, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Lisa Ann Tang. I'm the middle school math teacher at Hollibird Academy, and I'm also the Science Olympiad coach. I started coaching Science Olympiad last year as a way to extend the excitement that my students were showing in the classroom through doing experiments and hands-on activities. And in Science Olympiad, like Kate mentioned, through watching my kids build gliders and bridges, through watching them do experiments to test different chemicals and substances, I saw my students develop increasing joy, curiosity, and confidence in their abilities to do science. And for me personally, a lot of my journey as an educator has been learning how to step back in the classroom and let my students lead. And I think Science Olympiad has been such an amazing forum for that because it really allows students to lean in, test new solutions, and exercise their creativity. So I've seen them grow so much in their confidence in doing science and their interest in science. I also think Science Olympiad is such a wonderful way for different schools across our district to come together. We were at an invitational this past Saturday at Johns Hopkins, and it was so cool to see my students meeting and interacting with other students across the district. And it just brings me a lot of joy to see them growing. I'm so grateful to continue coaching the Hollibird team and excited as the Science Olympiad program will also continue to expand in Baltimore City. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to my students.
Hello, my name is Nahomi, and I'm a sixth grader at Hollibird Academy. I like Science Olympiad because it gives me an opportunity to try new things. It is really fun, and I've learned a lot of new things I didn't know about before. Last Saturday, we went to an invitational tournament, and it was a lot of fun. We had a new experience doing multiple events, waking up early and walking around Johns Hopkins University. We did really well, winning a lot of medals and our school placing second place. I believe Science Olympiad is a good opportunity for students.
Hello, my name is Jamie Harris, and I am, I am a sixth grader at Hollibird Academy Elementary School, and I am also a Science Olympia attendant. And I like Science Olympia because it gives me an opportunity to do what I like best and try something new that I haven't tried before. Last Saturday, we were at an invitational tournament at Johns Hopkins University, and it was really fun. And we earned a lot of medals and new achievements have, that we have never been done before have been made over the past year at Science Olympia. And I will keep going until I graduate, but I will still do small experiments here and there. And I will like to become a marine biologist or a zoologist because I can stop any local diseases coming towards animals or like already at animals.
Hello, my name is Obi Yara, although people call me Obi-Wan Kenobi. And I am finding Science Olympia very challenging. We went to the tournament on Saturday, and I didn't expect myself to do as well, although this will give me new opportunities and optimism to do better in science class. So the only thing I have learned is that Science Olympia is difficult. Even though I didn't do as well as I wanted, I will try to cultivate myself to do better and earn more awards and try to have fun. I wonder what will come up next.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
Commissioner McFadden has to say.
You all, you're the excitement for tonight. So thank you for coming and sharing with us. To the two of you on the end, I know that the young person in the center, you told us what your plans are for career and how you plan on changing the world with that career plan. But I want to know from the two of you, what are your career plans and how do you expect to change the world in those career plans?
I either want to be a lawyer or a technology designer, something to do with STEM. And I think it would change the world because if I was a lawyer, I would help defend people with, with unwright laws, people that are like wrongly convicted of doing something. And I would try to help them in their case because I like debate a lot, and I want to incorporate that into some of my career.
I think that's very noble.
I don't really have any career plans as of yet, but probably to be a doctor because I guess that was just my destiny.
I mean, if that's your answer, that's your answer. Thank you, madam, too.
Commissioner Bondima. I'm really excited about you guys here. And I just want to say something to the young lady firstly. Even though you say you might go into being an attorney, the beauty of being in science is that, first, I want to say you're never unemployed. Once you take on the science, you're never, and that science helps you with that journey to whatever you want to be. So always remember, take as much science and math as possible, and everything will work out, okay? And you said something about your experiment didn't work out so well, young man? Or do you say that didn't? What did you say?
I just said something that like I didn't do as well as I wanted. Yeah, I didn't do as well as I wanted. So I was just gonna, I was just gonna develop myself, so.
And you know, I just want to mention something about in science, sometimes you don't do as well as you want to do. Sometimes you make mistakes, and the beauty of science is that making mistakes help you to move forward because those mistakes is where you move forward. Because there's never really a mistake, okay? And you can learn from things not working out right or not going to where you want it, and that's the process in science. So always remember, even if what you want to do or can't do or whatever, just keep on going. Science is the, I have to say, to me, the foundation for everything in education. I say everything, okay? And I'm telling you, because I've been in science since I was in kindergarten, okay? And I would tell you that I have never been unemployed. Once you're in science, remember that I've never been unemployed. You can always have work when you're in science, or you can move forward. And I just, you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you all. I was going to ask you, could you tell who the scientist was up here? But she's already told you. And I'm sure she'll probably be around when you go over to her campus at Morgan for the Olympiad. And congratulations. Thank you for sharing your excitement at learning and experimenting, and good luck in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And hope you come. Everyone's invited. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge a gift of $45,000 to support the development of a plumbing teacher position for the restart of the Plumbing CTE Pathway at Mergantala Vocational Technical High School. And this gift came from BGE. So I want to thank them. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel and quasi-judicial matters. Commissioner Brooks, there's a second. Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor?
Richardson.
Chinya.
McFadden.
Robert.
That's seven, six, seven, two absent. I got, did I get that one right? Okay, thank you. I'm getting there. All righty, so with that, I can turn this over to Dr. Santa Lisa.
Thank you, Board Chair Chinya. I am going to invite Chief Grant Skinner forward for tonight's PEP agenda.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Dr. Santa Lisa. So we have three appointees this evening, and they are all here. So please stand and be recognized when I call your name. First, Kevin Taylor, Staff Specialist for the Student Resilience Grant, is appointed Coordinator of the CCEIS Grant effective February 12th. Brittany Horn, Educational Associate at Academy for College and Career Exploration, is appointed Assistant Principal at ACE effective February 12th. And Joshua Sivin, General Counsel for Montgomery County Public Schools, is appointed Chief Legal Officer effective March 2nd.
Thank you, Jeremy. And I'm going to ask Joshua Sivin to continue to stand, if you don't mind. As is our, has become our custom for both school leaders as well as cabinet members, we give a more extended overview of their work. And tonight, I am very pleased to be able to welcome Joshua Sivins to City Schools in the role of the District's Chief Legal Officer effective March 2nd. The Chief Legal Officer performs a critical role in overseeing the legal office and providing legal advice, counsel, and litigation defense to the board, to me, and to district employees. Mr. Sivin is eminently qualified to fill that role. He served as General Counsel for Montgomery County Public Schools since 2014, but he grew up in Baltimore and currently lives here with his wife and children who attend city schools. Most importantly, his distinguished service as counsel to the Director of Litigation at the NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund, including several cases in the U.S. Supreme Court and Court of Appeals, along with his continuing commitment to educational equity, fair housing, and economic justice, aligns closely with city schools' priorities for our schools and students. Mr. Sivin graduated from Yale College, studied history at Oxford University as a Rhodes Scholar, received a JD from Yale Law School, and served as a law clerk to Judge Stephen Reinhardt of the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, and Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg of the U.S. Supreme Court, or as my daughter Talia likes to say, the fearless RBG. I am thrilled to welcome Joshua Sivin to the City Schools team and look forward to benefiting from his expertise as our thought partner. Congratulations and welcome, Josh. So as we usually do, I am pleased to continue this evening with a brief video from our team of student reporters. In honor of Career and Technology Month, I want to invite everyone to watch highlights from a new series called CTE Explained that gives students a platform to share about their career technology experiences.
Hey, it's Bryce Taylor with the City Schools Student Media Team, and this is the premiere episode of our brand-new series, CTE Explained. In this series, we will dive deep into different CTE programs, talk with students, and get a real feel for what it's like. But get this, each episode will feature a demonstration by the students showcasing their CTE pathway skills. How does that sound? Cool? Well, today's episode is carpentry. Let's get cutting. So I'm here with Jaron. He's been a part of the carpentry program for two years now. So Jaron, what are we doing today?
So basically, we're turning logs into benches.
All right.
First step over here, we're on a chainsaw this side to even out the middle.
Shave it down to where, though, you get to the good wood because that wood is no good no more.
What happens if you put like a piece of bad wood into a piece of furniture?
I mean, it could break very easy.
All right, we don't want that to happen. All right, so Tara and Jade are going to show us about the procedures it would take to help somebody that is unconscious and in need of CPR.
Okay. Let's get it.
Then you turn this on.
All right, so what does this thing do?
Analyzing heart rhythm.
It analyzes the heart rhythm?
So it can tell what type of shock that it needs. Clip, stay clear of the patient.
This is where it's going to get messy at, right here.
We put it, we scoop it into our hands, and then now what are you doing?
I don't want to put the batter inside the bowl, so I'm going to like mix it right here. And I always add like little by little because you can always add more, but you can never take away. And that's what I learned.
Now, how does, you know, this culinary class tie into your everyday life?
It ties into my everyday life because I have another job, like an actual catering job.
You got that experience down pat?
I'm still learning.
So you would say you feel like you're prepared for jobs?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the yellow-tailed tilapia. Come on. These are the guys who normally stay in here.
What do you use to feed them?
Right here in this bin, we have different types of food that we'll use on them.
So we saw lots today, guys. We saw you make breakfast sandwiches, the food computers, tilapia farm, the greenhouse, the chicken coop, and the duck, and it's all been fun. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
That was an amazing tour of the incredible agriculture program at my school, Green Street Academy. Thanks again to Chris and Chris for giving me the tour and showing me all the ins and outs. You can watch additional episodes of CTE Explained on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and Twitter. This has been Tia Bryan on City Schools TV. See you at the next pathway.
Nicely done. Nicely done. And a special thanks to the Office of College and Career Readiness, Communications, and the Student Media Team for partnering on this student-centered series. I will also say that I was waiting to see Bryce as Chef Bryce, who also is part of a career track and actually has cooked with some of the lead chefs in the city as well. So in addition to being a broadcast journalist, Bryce also is part of a CTE pathway. So thank you again. It is now my great pleasure to recognize two of our It is now my great pleasure to recognize two of our talented student entrepreneurs from Francis Scott Key Elementary Middle School for their accomplishment in going all the way to the Nationals of the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship Nifty Competition. Despite the fact that Ja'Kani, did I say your name right, Ja'Kani? Ja'Kani? Thank you. Thank you for teaching me well. And Tyvon and Tyvon were by far the youngest competitors at the Nationals. They were seventh graders at the time, with the majority of 30 businesses represented by high school juniors and seniors. So these seventh graders competed with high school juniors and seniors. They went all the way to the quarterfinals and generated lots of interest in their Aqua app. Please join me in welcoming our student entrepreneurs, Ja'Kani Massey and Tyvon Clark, along with their Nifty coach, Ms. Deneen McDonald, and Principal Cory Bazemajian, to tell us about their Aqua app for improving communication between the hearing and deaf communities.
Thank you for having me.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you for having us. So I'm Mrs. McDonald, and just briefly about me. I've been at Francis Scott Key for going on my 20th year now. And when I retire, it'll be from FSK, not necessarily Bottomham City, because that is my home. Mr. Bazemajian had to leave, had to go pick up his son. But that's okay, because that way he can't steal our limelight. It's about the kids. He likes to steal their limelight. He taught, he told me about Nifty when he was a teacher at Francis Scott Key. So my passion with Nifty is that it helps young people develop that entrepreneurial mindset, where they can turn problems into ideas, to opportunities, and then to, of course, moneymakers, because the bottom line is businesses want to make money. So as a teacher for Nifty, I always present my students with the broad picture. Name some things that you've had problems with, you don't quite have a solution for. So teaching Ja'Kani and Tyvon was very easy because automatically Ja'Kani identified the problem, which she'll share. So as soon as I heard her speak about the problem, I said, "We're going to the Nationals." I always claim victory in September. And so for the 10 years that I've been teaching Nifty, every year, we've gone further and further in terms of my students. So this past year was the first year that we won first place, we being Francis Scott Key, first place over everyone. And I, when I say everyone, I usually mean Roland Park, because Roland Park was always setting the standard. And so if that's the standard and we want to beat them, I'd have my students reach for that standard. So that was the first time that we beat everyone. And so in New York, they presented their idea. Just listening to them talk and present, I could see them coming to life a long way from September, when they were kind of in the box, not wanting to outreach. And my thing is, I'm pushing. I'm going to push you to the limit. And so they responded remarkably. So they have won, they won $1,500 here at the Baltimore level. They went to compete in New York again against seniors and juniors in high school. I think they had the best idea, and when you see their presentation, you will see that it solves a problem and it connects people. And so I'm a huge proponent of the written language, the spoken language, and even if that spoken and written is in sign. And so that is my passion as a Nifty teacher. My training is in social studies and history, but I touch on the economics part, because I want kids to be financially literate. And so we tie that into the curriculum for social studies. So enough about me. I'm gonna present now Ja'Kani Massey and Tyvon Clark to see their award-winning app.
Do we just talk about it?
Yes. Well, yeah, share how the whole concept came about.
Okay, so just like Ms. McDonald said, back in September, when we started doing this course after National History Day, she basically said, "Write down three basic ideas that you want to have for like this whole thing." At first, I was doing this for the grade, obviously. But later on, I was like, I wrote down like a cake batter business and this and that. And she was like not really pleased with it. And then later on, I realized I really do have a big problem with my family and seeing my family struggle with being in this world. Like, for instance, we have Google, Alexa. We have Xfinity, where you can talk into the mic, and they're not able to do that like we are. And also, if I'm not there and like someone's talking to them, they don't understand, like they won't, they might not understand, or sometimes there's someone there that's probably being rude to them and they don't even know. And I saw that a lot of times. And so I made that as my idea. And I presented it to my friend and my best friend, Tyvon, who's very good in technology and I'm not really that great. So that's when I asked him to work on this with me, because he's better at technology with me, well, better than me. So that's when he had the idea to make this as an app. I was gonna make this as a like device or something like that. So, you're Tyvon.
Yeah, my best friend Ja'Kani, I was very fond of her and her family, so I decided I wanted to help her out. So I basically like felt bad, because I was really close with their family. I would go over for dinner, so I wanted to help her out, because I know, I knew how hard it was for them to connect. So then her great idea sparked this whole app, so I just wanted to support that.
Yeah, so our first round in school, I really was nervous, because I was like, ugh, what if I don't do good? Like, what if we just don't move on? I really want this to work with my, so this can help my family out and so that this can help at least 6 million other people in this world, well, in the United States, to have that communication without having to have someone be there and being rude. And so then they can actually connect with them. So when we won, I was like, oh my God, we're gonna move on. We're gonna make this map. We're gonna earn money and we're gonna help people. So when we moved on to the city round, I think that was the most nerve-wracking thing, because this is our first experience and I've never done anything like this. Before this, I was a quiet kid in Ms. McDonald's class. I wouldn't even talk. Like, I would only talk when she called on me. And even when she did call on me, I was very quiet. Like, so this sparked confidence in me, and it's all that I am capable of doing things that are out of my comfort zone and out of my box. And this can lead to me being successful. And this is, this is a way for me to pave my path into my future and what I want to do for my future.
Okay, yeah, working on this business and practicing and pitching made me a better presenter, because when I was in Ms. McDonald's class before like September, I was also very quiet. But I knew I could read. I knew I could speak. I wanted to share my talents. So working with Ja'Kani, practicing like every day, made me more confident than I already was. So I was just very thankful that Nifty helped us, like sparked our idea. Like, they took us on many journeys, helped us raise the money. So every day is just like closer and closer and closer for us to get to like developing our app. So, so like, we just have to practice more. So that's like one of the main reasons we wanted to come here, to pitch our idea. Internet work. Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, to piggyback on what Tyvon said, many people that we met, basically an app developer or other people, basically said that this isn't possible, because they don't have the technology to do this, so we should try something else. We shouldn't do this business idea. We, there's no way you can do this. Like, other companies have been trying this for years and years and years. But my thing is, the back of my head, I'm like, but we're 14 and we came up with this idea. While these people at other businesses, high-end ones, probably 30 or older, who knows, don't even, don't even, already came up with this idea, yet seventh graders who started off as quiet kids, getting good grades, not really knowing what to do with life, like we're going through puberty, we're figuring out what high school we want to go to, come up with this idea. So I think that we are able to do it, and I don't really care what they think. And I think me and Tyvon will definitely get there this year and make it and win that $17,000 for Nifty again this year. So that's what I think that Nifty is, a great program that I think every school should have, because this does spark joy and it does spark confidence in many kids. Like, I've seen many of my friends who basically get so quiet in like school and they don't think that they can get far. Yet, when it comes to Nifty, they are able to present their idea, think that they can do it, have the motivation to try again next year. This is why I think that this program should be probably worldwide in every single school around the States.
Yes. Also, it's also about support, like our classmates, our parents, our friends are all supportive of our idea. They were just like, after our practice, they would clap us. Of course, they gave like comments about what we should improve, but of course, we grew from that. And like, they're like, they helped us with our presentation. They helped us like grasp from like our ideas. So I like thanked them for like being as supportive of the, as they are. Like, my grandmother, Ja'Kani's moms, and Ms. McDonald were like the biggest support factor in our whole company. So I just want to be thankful for them. Like, she, in my opinion, would be the best coach for Nifty, because like she drives us to that point where we like, Nifty is like the main thing you have to work, like work on. Like, it can like help set up your business, so I appreciate her.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't you talk about me.
Yeah.
Just like Tyvon said, about her being our great coach to us for Nifty, she's also one of my favorite teachers throughout my school year, because she, one, she's very grateful, I mean, I'm very grateful for her. And she did teach me to have self-confidence in myself and have self-confidence in my business. Because before that, I was pretty much like, ah, this isn't gonna go anywhere. Like, I'm just gonna do this for the grade, like me and Tyvon are just gonna get the A, and it'll be over with. I'll go on and do my summer stuff, right? So basically, because of Ms. McDonald, I'm more okay with doing things by myself. I'm okay with presenting in front of my class now. I'm grateful for her. Like, one time, we wrote an essay for class, and it was basically, we watched a movie based on an African-American coach teaching this, this team from like a very small town that didn't have enough money. And it was like, like African-Americans, like in poverty. And so basically, the name was Who's My Coach Harrison? Carter. Carter. Who's My Coach Carter? And I wrote an essay about her, because she was my Coach Carter, and she pushed me to the limit. She encouraged me. She still pushes me to the limit, and she gets me back in shape. If I'm just like not even paying attention in class and I'm just staring off in space sometimes, she'll just get me back on. And I, that's why I have good grades now. And that's why I still want to do Nifty to this day. And I don't even care if we don't make it on this year, because I still want to do it with Tyvon. Whether or not we don't have that money, I want to raise that money. So we are able to do this to help so many people around the world have that communication and have that way to live life as we hearing people do.
Yes, Nifty has taken like a lot of effort. Like, we like have practiced so much, you can't even believe it. Yeah, we've practiced at like, name like any place around our school. We would walk to school and practice. We would go to McDonald's and practice, eat in practice. FaceTime in practice. And like, we would watch like other presentations to learn like how the judges scored, so we can like learn from that and make our presentation even better. Yes, and Ja'Kani, like I'd say, she's the best partner you can have. She's supportive. She's really funny. Like, she's like, like without her, like this business wouldn't even be how it is. Like, she's the one beneath my wings. Like, she's a great asset to the team.
You want to present the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Is it the remote for to advance?
Yeah, I think.
There you go. So you can take the floor.
Wait, can you press the slides for us?
Go ahead, set this down here.
Hello, how may I take your order? Huh? What?
It's supposed to say a small drink.
Small drink?
Imagine, living your life in complete silence, having to write down the simplest things, like getting a small drink. Would you want to go through that? Over 6 million people in the United States go through this every single day in their lives.
And this is where our app Aqua comes in. Hello, my name is Tyvon Clark.
My name is Ja'Kani Massey.
And we are the founders.
And CEOs.
Of Aqua. Where you can sign on the go, so you won't sigh on the low.
70% of deaf people don't even go to the doctors, because an interpreter isn't present. This is an impact on their health, because interpreters will normally be there to interpret what their diagnosis is or what's going on with them. Therefore, they're missing out on what they need to know and take care of their bodies. Most deaf people have to write down their conversations if they are in a public place to talk to someone. This can like cause them to lose track of time and delay them whenever they're trying to go somewhere.
Okay, Aqua will give deaf people a tool to talk to others in the everyday situation. So how we want our app to work is you sign. Oh, well, the video's supposed to play, but you sign and like there will be text boxes to interpret the sign. So it will be easy for deaf people to communicate with hearing people. And on the other hand, a hearing person could type in something and it will translate to sign. Aqua is designed to turn American, to ASL into English-language text or the other way around. We designed our app in the perspective of a coda kid of a deaf adult.
In February 2019, we surveyed 75 people, and oh wait, 35,000 people. And 95% of them said that they prefer to use our app instead of writing down the conversations or using gestures.
Okay, our app is a mobile ad publishing industry with an annual industry size of $27 billion.
Our population target market is 8 million people.
Our market size is 6 million people. Okay. You wanna, okay. We want to promote on social media such as Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. We also want to use Google Ads and Kickstarter to fund our business.
We also want to advertise in person, like going to events such as gala debt parties. Like, for instance, last month, we had like a convo event, which is an app that you would talk to the phone on and interpreter would be there, so you could call to someone. Or there's like events such as Hispanic Deaf Awareness Week and things like that. So we would like to present our app through there to get to reach people that really need this app.
Yes, okay. I'll go. Okay, so our app is $4.99 per download, and so does our other competitors. So what makes our app special is like you could use sign language to turn into text and like a hearing person can turn a text into sign language. Also, ours are like more, I don't know what it is. Ours are more like, it's like better, because like other apps, they usually get the signs wrong and there's like not more of a diverse like character. So we want to change that and make our app better for people like Ja'Kani's parents, so they can communicate better.
Yeah, so Software Studios ADSL Translator, it's basically $4.99. It basically uses like word dictionaries and avatar to sign, I mean, take that translation and do it. And they also like don't use text and they don't get it accurate. And then the other one, Pro Deaf Tech, is a free app that normally most people would download. And then it's an avatar, I believe, and it wouldn't get the signs right. And sometimes it would mess up words or it would say something completely different, so.
Yeah, okay, so Ja'Kani's parents are deaf, so of course she knows a lot about the community. She served as an interpreter for two years. She's an honor student, and she's currently taking coding classes.
Tyvon has been working with technology since he was six, like making videos, fixing computers, laptops, name it. He's an honor student and he's taking coding classes with me, too.
Okay, our definition of one unit is one app per download. Our selling price is $4.99. Our COGS are $1.99, and our contribution margin is $1.
We will, our monthly break-even unit is we would have to sell 120 a hundred and twenty units to make three hundred and sixty dollars.
Yes, and our variable material expenses are ninety-nine cents with our fixed expenses being one hundred and sixty dollars. Okay, today Aqua's, Aqua is in its alpha testing.
And our future plans are that we want to work with a professional coder to help us take Aqua from Coda uh, alpha testing to better test, pet, better testing. Uh, we wanna add web services to support downloads and we wanna add more languages to expand our target market.
Okay, we also wanna down, we wanna download fifty cents per download to dogs, donate fifty cents per download to Dogs of the Deaf. And Dogs of the Deaf is like a company for, to like give out service dogs for people with disabilities, mostly deaf people. Okay, then again, my name is Tyvon Clark.
My name is Jekani Massey.
And we are the founders.
And CEOs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Can, can I make a comment? Thank you, Coach Carter McDonald.
Thank you.
Thanks for not having ca- cannon your vocabulary. I mean, I was impressed by, one, the talent, uh, two, by the motivation, three, the grit, four, the confidence, five, the teamwork. And then you guys went over the top when you started talking about competitive advantages and competitive analysis. Break even points. I'm impressed. Uh, if you have any information, please give it to me so I can. And I guess the other thing is, uh, you two are only fourteen?
Yes.
Uh, two things come out. Uh, you're really smart. And I know adults twice your age that cannot public speak. They'd rather die first. So great job. I mean, you guys.
Yeah, we worked very hard on that.
You guys are great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We were a little rusty, that's why the center.
Oh, that was rusty.
Yeah, that was rusty. That's rusty.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so I just wanted to say you all are amazing. Um, and as a fellow FSKer, uh, twenty years ago, I am so happy to see the legacy of the school, um, still thriving and excited that um, you are the caliber of students who are at SFSK, um, FSK, um, cuz it was a, I had quite an experience there as well. Um, I also wanna say, um, a couple of things. Uh, so you're not just inventors, you're originators. And so what you were trying to do is sort of create something originally that has not been done before. And it's gonna be hard, it's gonna be challenging. And an innovator might say, yeah, there, there are these different ways you could do this. You're saying I need to create a whole different way or new technology or new way of thinking about this problem in order to solve it. So I wanted to say kudos to you for that. Um, also, I would put you in the squarely in the health field, um, and social innovation in the health space. Because if you make the links to um, health and outcomes and trying to get to the doctors, um, you have a whole market um, that would hopefully hold you with great um, uh, ease um, in that space. Uh, and also, if I could get a contact information, um, I'll put you in contact with one of the tech people that I know. He's a, a tech developer. And we can get you connected to try to uh, elevate that up as well.
Um, I just wanted to shout out um, HBCUs, uh, because I have twin sons who go to Howard University. And one of them is Mr. College of Engineering Architecture, Mr. CEA, and he's running for Mr. Howard this year. His twin brother is running for Mr. College of Arts and Sciences. And so they're gonna combine their campaign because now we, we know what STEM is, but now they have the new term which is STEAM, which is adding arts into STEM programs. So I'm excited that um, they're doing it, but more excited because they give back time. As their, as their mother and teacher, they volunteered to come to the school last year to work with Jekani and Tyvon and just to come up with ideas on how to get it started. And so it was Tim's idea to, he said, why don't you do some kind of little skit? Just to hook the audience. And so he came in and um, some of their other college classmates said, it's just important to give back. And so we emphasize uh, STEM programs. And that's one reason why it kinda turned Jekani down for the cakes and cookies thing. Like, everybody does that. I want you to go further. So um, so that the, and we're, we're gonna go to Howard um, next month. And just to get an idea of the opportunities that exist at those schools that don't always kinda get that shine. So I'm, I'm a proud mom of, of Howard Bison, um, who give back, who come and talk to the kids, who give encouragement, who came to the competition at city. And so just always giving feedback, came to the, it came to Morgan State for the, a region, for the city, and then came to the evening for the regional. So my sons are very supportive of what I do. And they're supportive of my students as well. And so, um, and that's why we're here. Uh, so we've heard two people say, can I get your information? Because that, this app is going to be a reality. It is not just about the grade. It is about, as Jekani said, bridging that gap. Because, you know, people want to be able to communicate. And this tool is gonna do it. If we can't get it done at this level, we're gonna have a letter writing campaign to Ellen and whatever other shows that are out there because it does take a lot of money. Startup expenditures are quite extensive, but it's going to happen because it, it needs to happen. And Nifty should be in every single school in Baltimore City.
I'm glad you said that cuz I'm gonna, I wanted to just give a shout out to Nifty. Um, I have been a supporter since Nifty started in Baltimore City. I think it's one of the best kept secrets that we have. And just uh, listening to and watching the students, uh, what it does in terms of, of just building confidence and, and helping our students, uh, that along with the debate, I just, um, kudos to you all. And uh, again, any, I would also say to my fellow commissioners, if you've never had the opportunity of going to one of the events where students do the presentations, Nifty is always looking for folks to judge. But just to go and just watch um, young people present their ideas uh, is a fascinating and a wonderful experience. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McFadden said it reminds us of like the closing on Shark Tank. And so we just need to make sure you leave with the full patent. Um, and, and capital investors. So I think I would agree with the commissioner on that. Thank you all again. Um, right now, um, I am pleased to welcome Dr. Josh Scharfstein, Vice Dean for Public Health Practice and Community Engagement at Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. Uh, Dr. Scharfstein was Secretary of the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and is also the former Health Commissioner of Baltimore City. Um, above all, he is a strong supporter, valuable thought partner for all of us at city schools. And I would say, really above all else, he is a city school's parent. Um, I invited uh, Dr. Scharfstein and his team um, here today to share with us um, a study that uh, Johns Hopkins University conducted uh, to really quantify the impact of the systemic capital underfunding on city school students' learning. I don't wanna take the punchlines from the research, so I'm gonna turn it over um, to Josh and his team.
And it turns green. Thank you. Um, thank you very much, Dr. Santa Lysus. It's a pleasure to be here. And maybe I'll ask uh, my, our, a couple of our research assistants just to uh, introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Paris Lowe. Um, I'm currently in the Masters of Science in Public Health Program at Johns Hopkins. And a lot of the work that I do is in maternal and child health. Um, and this was just a great venture um, into some of the child health work that I've done.
Hi, I'm Edward Cordy. I'm a um, medical and public health student in the Masters of uh, Public Health Program. And um, concentrating in social and behavioral sciences. Really happy to help on this project.
Great, and I'll be pretty brief and then if you have any questions. Um, this is a project at the faculty level, was myself at the School of Public Health, uh, Richard Lofton from the School of Education and Rachel Thornton from the Department of Pediatrics. It's really, uh, wasn't a research project exactly. It's just kind of a story that we wanted to tell with data. Um, it's posted on the Center for Civic Impact website where Beth Flower and Catherine Klosik uh, helped us put this together. It's an interactive website um, designed for anyone in the public to, to understand. I can say as a parent, I'm certainly familiar with the challenges of the facility, the physical conditions in the city schools. But I didn't really understand them until personally, until we really got into a number of the details. And so the website, if you've seen it, allows you to, uh, it sort of tells a story and presents some data and also has some interactive components so people can look at it in, in their own way. Um, the first story is why do the physical conditions of school matter? Um, our answer to that is because children thrive in, in healthy environments. And it's extremely important um, to think about the entire classroom and the healthy school, not just, you know, a particular textbook or um, a particular curriculum. Um, researchers found that the condition of schools is related to absenteeism, lower test scores, um, asthma attacks, other health outcomes, less retention of teachers. And Maryland, there's a constitutional right to education. So this is an issue that's not just a health issue, it's a, it's a legal issue. Um, not just for Josh Scharfstein, but for Josh Simmons also, the other Josh. Okay. So um, what are the physical conditions of the city schools? And I think when we looked at this, we found that the physical conditions are the worst in this, in Baltimore than in the state of Maryland, um, in part because the schools are the oldest, um, tied with Kent County, which has just a few schools. Um, uh, and uh, old buildings are obviously a challenge. We also found, um, this is from the uh, state uh, surveys that have happened over the last four or five years, that Baltimore City is only, I think seventeen percent of the schools in good or superior condition, which is by far the lowest. Some school districts have a hundred percent in good or superior condition. And then we looked at what the consequences were for kids. Uh, we created a database of every time a school was closed or started late or closed early because of a problem with the physical conditions of the school. So like no heat, pipe burst, something like that. Um, and we found over the last five years that um, kids in Baltimore lost about one point five million hours of school. Most of that in the last couple of years. Um, and this is not counting like snowstorm in Baltimore, that doesn't count. But something specific with their school. Um, and we looked at why, um, and where. So there's an interactive map on the website that you can play around with. You can look at particular schools. You can look at particular reasons for s- closing. You could look at groups of schools. So this is all available, you know, to the public to see um, the consequences of the underinvestment in city schools. This is the, the reasons. Um, the number one reason was failure of heating. Um, the number two reason was failure of cooling, but we also found uh, electrical, fire, gas, and plumbing issues are responsible for mistime. And a really important point is, the actual closure of the school is just really like the tip of the iceberg. Because when it's hot, it influences learning. There's so many other consequences to um, inadequate um, conditions, but it's a way to, to be able to quantify the most severe impact on school. We looked at uh, the racial equity issues involved, um, and we found that um, uh, black students experienced more missed hours. And particularly, um, the percentage of time in one or two-star schools experienced by black students that was missed was even higher. So um, it sort of, in general, it's an issue of racial equity, but it even becomes even more so the closer that you look. Um, why? We have a whole section on why, which is very interesting to myself, even having been involved in the city schools for many years. Um, to really appreciate the underinvestment, um, the state gives roughly the same amount of core capital grants to each county, but um, the counties give far less or more, you know, the ver- is much more variable. This was just one year, twenty twenty, and you can see the staggering difference between the counties. Um, Baltimore City has much less of a tax base than the other counties, which, which obviously partly explains that. But um, unlike for other operating funds, the capital funds, um, the state doesn't really compensate for the difference in the wealth of counties. Um, and that may be the last one. Um, you know, I'll just also say, we, we, at the end, explain a lot of the great work the school system has done and under the very difficult conditions that you're facing, um, to uh, take stock of all the schools. Um, in fact, we use some of that data in here. I think um, there are ninety-seven schools which have the HVAC systems uh, past their replacement date. There are many, many hours missed in those schools. I believe there um, a whole bunch of schools, thirty or so, that have HVAC systems with parts that are more than twenty years past the replacement date. So you can actually see that on that interactive map. So the goal is to try to provide some transparency and tell the story that you know, the school system is doing everything it can with the resources it has, but it doesn't have enough resources. And the consequence is real, a profound um, unfairness to the children in the city of Baltimore.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment. I, I surely, one of my alma maters right by the way, Johns Hopkins. I was just, I wish this, you had done this research about two years ago when we were going through the issues of, of um, heat and air conditions. And it would be wonderful if we could put, if this is online, because some of the questions that we have, and I shared it with us, um, Sat- Dr. Santa Lisa, when I went to greet students at an elementary school the opening day two years ago. And the parents were really upset about no air condition. And I took them, some of them went outside with me and I explained what you just done, you just um, presented to the parent. And they were surprised because I took time to explain it to them. And this would be wonderful if we could send it out so people can stop asking when they think that we're not telling the truth about some of the things that's occurring. But to have your research documented, to show our parents and the community and um, the state of Maryland, what we're dealing with. They know it, but we need to continue to put it in writing and so they can visualize what we, we, we've been talking about all along. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just say, we, we actually were able to present it to a number of the parent leaders, PTA, uh, people before we did this to get their input. And we, we, they had the same exact comment. We'd really like people to see this. And so, um, in addition to the school system sending it out, we've offered, any, anytime anyone wants to talk about it, we'll be there. One of us will come. So we're happy to uh, be part of, be the messenger on this.
So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for um, your work on this. Um, it has been just tremendous to um, to work with you on this. We, you know, uh, you, we helped by providing the information, but the way you took the information that we provided um, and, and told a story that we all know and we, and we experience every day and our students experience every day. Um, and our, our teachers experience every day, but we, it's just really hard for outside um, folks to understand the magnitude of it. And I know in my role, I think that one of the most humbling things in this role has been the challenges of the facilities and the um, humbling um, um, realization of the gap between what the resources that you have and, and what you need. Uh, and the compounding impact on that, on every student in, I mean, our classrooms are rarely the right temperature. They're, they're often um, too hot, they're usually too hot or too cold. They're never the right temperature. Um, and, and the number of days we're closing schools, that the way you quantify it, um, from a racial equity lens is just hugely important. So I, 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 this is such important research and um, and I, I just can't express enough how appreciative we are of you thinking of creative ways to document a story that has been going on in Baltimore City for many, 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 many years. And um, and needs people to understand the, um, the, the compounding implications of our students that are sitting in our classrooms each day.
Please, Commissioner Lynn.
Yeah, the presentation was really good. Um, also, this site in particular, a slide, sorry. Um, one thing that it really points out to me that I, I'm glad it's in the public and everyone can see it is the amounts of funding that local, uh, that we're putting in. And I would like to like stress that enough to be like, you know, we see these other jurisdictions or liaise putting in more uh, funding within our school systems, but then we see Baltimore City where we have less than a hundred. And I just wanted to, you know, amplify that and say that, you know, we need to talk to our local leaders and we need to call them and say, hey, we want more funding for schools, you know, rather than police or, you know, rather than this or rather than that. Because, you know, we see that we're needing help and we see that the state is not helping. But also in this, in translation, it says that, you know, the local jurisdictions are not helping either. And that, that's the message that I get. So, you know, just go out, you know, vote, um, use your powers that you have as a citizen of Baltimore City to um, you know, understand and, you know, fight for what you want.
Uh, Dr. Scharfstein, I wanted to say thank you for that. Um, this is a beautiful uh, presentation. Um, I also wanna just highlight the power of a, um, a meaningful collaboration um, between uh, university and the school system. And to be able to take data that uh, we know very well and to partner with um, folks who are trying to do applied research where it's not just sitting, data just sitting in a space for no reason, but to actually use it on behalf of trying to shift public perception and to actually allocate resources, I think it's meaningful. Um, and I hope that um, sort of this uh, this, this applied stance is, is, is something that can continue to be sort of honed in that relationship. Because I think, um, I think there's so many other stories that we can tell, um, as, if we have the right partners to do that.
I will just conclude with saying uh, thank you again for doing the work.
I will just conclude with saying thank you again for doing the work. I actually got some chuckles out of it, because I had people who shall remain nameless, who thought that I would be upset by the publishing of this. And it was very interesting to me, they thought, this is just scathing, why would they put that out there? And da-da-da, and I said, well, it's the truth. And the reality is, and I don't know if everybody heard it, but what was striking for me was when the team added up all of the hours and the days that Baltimore City Public School students have lost because of poor systematic investment in buildings, and that it literally is a total of 1.5 million hours of instruction. 1.5 million hours of instruction and 221,000 full days of school. And we talk about chronic absence, we should talk about chronic absence, but let's talk about that. So I want you to know that I got a big chuckle, as people came to me thinking I would be absolutely outraged, and I said, I don't know why you're outraged, to Commissioner Brooks' point, with the folks who cut the data. You need to be outraged with decades-long systemic underfunding of school building infrastructure in Baltimore City. And part of why I think it hit this way was because of those hours. And I had lots of people saying, well, but how did they compute? You know why? Because it's stark. Because when you say 1.5 million hours of instruction, it really takes people's breath away. So I just want to thank you, let you in on a little, but it was hysterical to me, how many people came up and thought, I was going to be all upset with the team for doing this, when really, to Commissioner Brooks' point, you actually did us a favor. Commissioner Bondimas said, like, this is the kind of thing that we can use, and I think it's heartening when you hear Commissioner Lynn, right, who really is like the next person who's going to sit in this, these kinds of seats, who are also saying, we get the message. So thank you again, and this concludes my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am going to echo what was said in the audience. Hopefully, you will be joining us in Annapolis as we look at legislation around both capital funding as well as the instructional program. At this time, I'm just, I'm going to review the consent agenda. As you know, this is not a time when we will be voting. We will vote after public comment, but I'm going to go through those, and then after public comment, if there are additional ones, I'll come back. We will be pulling item 8.01, which is CEO Contract, 8.02, Cub Contract Agreement, 8.03, Policy JFE, Homeless Students, 8.04, A Request For Board Approval Of The FY 2020 Supplemental Appropriation, 8.05, Twenty-First Century School Buildings Plan Annual Report, pulling And then in procurement, we have one item, 14.01, Plant and Moran, P L L C. Okay. So the items, make sure I got them right, the items that have been pulled, 8.01, 8.06. I'm sorry, and, I'm sorry, yes, 8.03, I would pull for Commissioner to vote. All righty. With that, then we will move to public comment, and we'll start with specially recognized groups. Do we, Baltimore Teachers Union? Is, yeah, President Diamond T. Brown is here? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm also sharing this space with Ask Me, who was right after me. We would like to sit at the table in solidarity.
All right. This is the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Mr. Glenn Middleton.
Good evening. I was shocked to learn last week the Baltimore City Public Schools' unaffiliated staff will receive a 3% cost of living adjustment this year. These are administrators who aren't a part of any union, and I don't, and don't have any bargaining rights, and don't work directly in schools or with students. Meanwhile, the educators who work directly with students only received a 2% cost of living adjustment this year, and will get even less next year. This board talks all the time about how the most important work of BCPSS happens in schools and classrooms. Yes, staff who aren't affiliated with any union, staff members that don't directly work with students, are getting a raise that is 50% higher than our teachers and our PSRP's. And don't get me wrong, a 3% cost of living adjustment is great, but the pay increase of educators in the classroom should be the baseline for the district's priorities. Unaffiliated staff are managers who already enjoy some of the highest salaries in the school system, and if they get 3%, then teachers and PSRP's should be getting four. No teacher or PSRP goes into education for money. We do it because we love working with young people, and we're committed to making the city better each and every day. We're not trying to get rich, we're fighting to be treated fairly. There's a lot of talk about Baltimore's teachers being exceptionally well-paid in the state of Maryland, but when you look at the actual numbers analyzed by MSD-E, the average teacher in Baltimore City makes less than the average teacher in the state of Maryland. And we're falling further behind as Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and others negotiate new contracts. And this isn't just about teachers, PSRP's, including our paraprofessionals and school secretaries, who overwhelmingly consist of black women who are underpaid. These women are the glue of Baltimore City, and too many of them aren't making a living wage. We do whatever we can for our students. As educators, we spend thousands of our own dollars on classroom resources, on copy paper, on books to stock a classroom library, on paint that we can repair, so that we can repair a wall, and on fans for overheated classrooms. We have elementary teachers with over thirty students in their rooms, and high school teachers with over thirty-five. We have mold in our buildings, heaters that don't work, and classrooms where mice appear every single day. Teachers and PSRP's in the classroom should be receiving the highest raises offered by BCPSS, because we do the most essential work and we face the greatest challenges. We not only teach, but counsel and guide young people who face the difficulties of growing up in one of America's most violent cities. We work to provide opportunities for young people who face tremendous stress in their daily lives, and we have so many successes that go unrecognized. We do this job because we love working with young people. When this board says that educators are the most impactful and important staff in BCPSS, we agree with you, and we want you to back up those words with actions. On behalf of the 7,000 members of the BTU, I demand that you do the right thing and present us with a memorandum of understanding that increase the wages and salaries of all of our members, teachers and PSRP's, to treat them at least as well as you have decided to treat unaffiliated employees. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Good evening. To the board chair, to the vice chair, but also to the superintendent and to the other board, the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. I'm Glenn Middleton, and I serve as the president of Ask Me Local 44 here in the city of Baltimore. And right to my right, to your left, would be Patrice Johnson, who's a custodian, and she serves as a labor relations specialist. I just became aware of this issue just recently, a few days ago, that you, the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners, approved a 3% cost of living increase retroactive to July the first, 2019, for all employees who are not represented by a union, the group that is referred to as unaffiliated. I find this appalling, so does our members in the school system, and very insulting to the hard-working members of Ask Me Local 44. I think it's almost ninety-six percent of them that actually live in Baltimore City, and about forty percent of them live right near the school where their children, grandchildren go. They are the food service workers in the school system in Baltimore, they are the custodians, they are the bus drivers, groundskeepers, building maintenance employees, but also engineers and hall monitors in the schools. We are by far the lowest-paid employees that we represent in the school system. We are the parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, and aunts, uncles, brothers, and sisters, and students in this school district. Why do I find this insulting, and also our members? Ask Me Local 44 represents just under 1,000 employees in the school system of Baltimore. This board has a legal duty to bargain with Ask Me workers on wages, hours of work, and other working conditions. In bargaining, we requested a raise of either 900 or 3% COLA, whichever was greater. It would have cost the school system less than $900,000, but what happened? We were told it was too much money, they could not, this school system could not afford it. Most of the board would agree, I guess, that $700 per employee or 2% COLA, whichever was greater, would have been a lot less. The board has no legal obligation to bargain with unaffiliated employees, but they're doing it. In fact, it does not bargain with them over wages, hours, or any working conditions whatsoever. With no bargaining obligation, we have, you have granted the highest-paid employees in this school system a 3% raise, and many of these employees are receiving $3,000 and $5,000 raises compared to the $700 that was offered to our members in the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees. We do not begrudge raises for any employees. However, we do begrudge the fact that we are still insulted that you had no interest in treating the Ask Me workers in the school system as valued employees. It's like you threw crumbs at us and said, take it. As I close out, we demand that you treat us fairly, give us a 3% raise or the $900, and the same to the teachers also. And Ask Me stands ready to sign an MOU that modifies our contract to give us raises equivalent to the raises you gave to these unaffiliated employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had no other of the recognized groups to sign up, so our next speaker is Octavia Parks from KIP.
I was present at the January 28th meeting as a parent in support of KIP Baltimore's enrollment increase. As you know, KIP was asking that you vote on an enrollment increase of 104 students to offset the budget discrepancies. While this was not an ideal situation, it was far better than the alternative, which was cutting approximately 12 staff positions. The board did grant an increase of only 54 students, which will translate into cutting approximately six staff positions. I left the meeting feeling deflated, unheard, and frankly angry. I am not here to data merely gripe or complain because we did not get what we wanted. While I do not claim to be an expert on the protocol of these meetings, I do know that we were not given a fair and equitable opportunity to express and defend our position. Our principal was given the allotted exact three minutes. Once her time expired, she was promptly cut off. However, that same allotment was not upheld for the other, others on the agenda. I watched as other schools and organizations were granted additional time to finish statements, and each and every one of them was given ample time to question, comment, and answer. It is not my intent to downplay the other causes or try to rank the importance of the other agenda items. However, our position was a matter of our children losing valuable services or actual teachers losing their jobs. And while I'm thankful that we did receive half of our ask, it was not enough. Why is this important to me, you ask? My son, who is on the autism spectrum and on a 504 plan, will be one of the children directly affected by the cuts. Coincidentally, yesterday, I attended his annual 504 meeting. Because of the services and support he receives, he has the highest math average, he's exceeded his reach goal for math in ELA class, and he made principal's honor roll for the first time ever last semester. But instead of celebrating his wins, I was forced to focus on the losses we will see next year, as his support team will be cut in half because of your decision. I don't think anyone wants larger class sizes for larger class sizes' sake, but the parents and staff from our school showed up in large numbers last week to show our support for this decision. This was not a business decision, but it was about equity of services. If given an equal chance, you would have heard that our school has the staff's support and administration to handle this increase seamlessly. But not only is money, a lack thereof, an obstacle to our children receiving what they deserve, but it's also a disregard for proposed and viable solutions. What is most disheartening and maddening to me is the apparent lack of care and consideration this vote received. It seems the decision was already made before we showed up. I also believe, and was reminded at the last meeting, that charter schools are treated like the school system's stepchild, but let me assure you, we are as much a legitimate child of Baltimore City as any other public school, and we deserve the same support, funding, and thought. I am here tonight to implore you all to take a good look at the processes and care in which these items are handled. On the other side, on the other side of your no are children, families, and teachers who are directly and adversely affected. I hope that in the coming days, my faith is restored in this board, but as a parent who will be left to pick up the pieces for my son, who will be directly and adversely affected because of the sheer disregard and hasty vote, I am left with much to be desired. Thank you.
Next is Kalila Harris.
staff members. I'm Kalila Harris. I am the connection chair for the Sci-Fi Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. The connection committee is a committee that focuses on social action, and we are charged with ensuring that our membership is politically engaged, well-aware of what it means to be engaged in our community, and providing service to Baltimore City. You may be familiar with other organizations in the Divine Nine. Sci-Fi Omega is the fourth Baltimore City chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha, the youngest. We celebrate our sixth year this week, and we also have a commitment to East Baltimore. Of all of the Divine Nine graduate chapters, Sci-Fi Omega is the only chapter that meets and focuses its attention on East Baltimore. We work across the city, but our focus is East Baltimore. We're based in East Baltimore. In a Baltimore City public school, we meet at Bernard Harris Elementary. If folk are in the audience that heard about, or heard about coming, will you wave from AK?
Great, thank you. So a large part of why we're here tonight is to say that you will see us again. We plan to come quarterly. We've begun an AK night at City Hall as well. You know, most of the organizations will do something in their state legislature, but we realize that the rubber hits the road here in Baltimore City. And I've been working with my chapter membership. All forty members are registered voter registration people. Got everybody prepared to register others to vote. We do that at every event.
What you have in front of you are some of the programs that we do with Baltimore City Public Schools. I want to just call your attention because you are all well-equipped to read to the PPO Period Project. This is something that Tina and I are actually going to be meeting about in two weeks. But we've been collecting organic feminine hygiene products. We are sure Baltimore City Schools is supporting House Bill 208 to ensure that every child has access to free menstrual products in schools. It should not be a barrier for our young women or any student who's menstruating. We've been collecting these materials since the fall when we were hosting debate watch parties and other events. Our goal is to supply every school in East Baltimore with at least 50 kits that includes fresh underwear, wipes, and organic feminine hygiene products, which if folk don't know, it reduces the impact of your menstruation because it has less chemicals. And we want to be able to expand it across the city, partner with city schools to make sure we are contributing to our neighbors in the way that they pour into us. This is my chapter president, Dr. Tiffany Parkman. And we really just want to make sure that we show a presence not only when cameras are on and not only when issues are so exigent that we need everybody to show up, but along the way, we want to make clear our long-term commitment to Baltimore City Schools. So, thank you for having us.
And before we go, we just want to let you know that we do offer scholarships for high school students, and they can be found on our website.
Our website is akaeastbaltimore.com. And we give away about $5,000 annually in book money, international travel, trade school, college, because we recognize the expansive where our kids will go.
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for your commitment to the community. One second, I believe someone has a question for you. Commissioner Bondima?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a comment. I'm on the Maryland Association of Board of Education, and we meet, now we're meeting every two weeks. And this topic has been a big topic. And I know, Dr. Santalisis, you know the bill number, I'm not sure.
208.
You got it? Okay. And there's a big conversation all around the state of Maryland with all the boards in reference to supplying...
Free menstrual products.
Excuse me?
Free products.
Free products to the student and having those products available to the young ladies. And it was surprising that most of the counties did not want to do it because of the finance. It's all about the money again. So, it's still a big conversation, and I was one that made a big deal about how important it is, especially during emergency.
Absolutely.
Especially, and some people just didn't want to talk about it. It's amazing that people still don't want to talk about it when it's a serious need for this. So, I am so excited about you bringing this topic because we just had this topic two weeks ago in reference to what you're talking about. And sometimes, if you read all the information about what's going on in Annapolis, you might want to go down there as a sorority and have a conversation and maybe speak in reference to it.
Well, Alpha Kappa Alpha will be in Annapolis on February 25th for our Lobby Day. But we've also been charged by our international organization to go beyond those one-day showups. And so, we will be advocating for a whole legislative platform.
And this is all the AKAs?
All the AKAs in the state of Maryland.
Tonya Ringo, Dr. Ringo is a very good friend of mine.
Yep, she's a West Baltimore chapter.
Yeah, she's West Baltimore.
But, yeah, all Maryland, all Maryland AKAs will be in Annapolis on February 25th.
Thank you very much.
And if I could also highlight one more thing. On February 28th, we are supporting Western Doves Class of 2020. We're sponsoring a talent showcase, and all of the entry fees will be going to that class of 2020 to make sure they have a great year, senior trip, or whatever it is that the youth of today do with their senior money. Great Prom, our soror, Dawn Strickland, is an assistant principal and is the class advisor for Class of 2020. So, we're happy to do that. That also falls under our international program. But there's Harlem Renaissance, Harlem Renaissance 2020. That's the theme of it.
Before you say that, since we got into East Baltimore, West Baltimore, we got into Western, I just have to tell you that I won't tell you the year, but my class from Eastern has a big reunion coming up this year. Go ahead, Commissioner McFadden.
I just want to thank you all for coming tonight and appreciate your advocacy and your support within the community and for our young people. But I also want to take a point of personal privilege with one of your sororors, who was my leadership coach. Her name was Felicia Iric, and she most recently passed away. She was the Executive Director of Program Implementation for New Leaders. But before that, she was a principal at Westport Academy here in Baltimore. And she also served as a program director for the New Leaders Cohorts here in Baltimore City. So, I know that AKAs are certainly advocates for education, and that is a priority for your organization. But I did want to acknowledge the memory of Felicia Iric, who has touched so many lives in Baltimore City and beyond, and abruptly passed away from us two weeks ago. So, I just wanted to take that moment.
Thank you, Ms. She.
Thank you again. We look forward to seeing you regularly, and thanks for the work that you're doing.
And I hope I have one, just one thing before they pass. And so, there was, I wanted to then thank you for the presentation, but also wasn't sure if this was intentional or not. You made a comment about saying folks who menstruate. And that framing, I think is...
I reframed it on purpose.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. I think that as for our trans folks, our trans men specifically, who are transitioning, or I appreciate that, and I caught that, so thank you.
I work in education policy, and so equity is a little bit of my focus. So, I would be remiss, I'd go back to work, and people would be like, "Ma'am." So, thank you. And you know, if I could say also, the last time I was here, the last time I had braids, and I was complaining about what? School facilities. This was two years ago. And Gayle King said something about it, but here we are. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks again.
Our next, our next speaker is Ms. Kim Truheart.
Three minutes is not enough, and intentional racism sucks. Thank you for disrupting it. It is critically important. I want to give a shout out to two organizations that have recently donated to Liberty Village Project. One is Next Day Floors, who donated nine-by-six remnants, over 30 of them. And I've provided them to teachers to put in their classrooms, and they're just loving it at Liberty, at Pimlico. And I've reached out to Calvin Ridwell, but I haven't heard back from them. The other organization, on Friday, did an expungement clinic at Liberty Rec and Tech Center, where we expunged over 100 records of mainly young people in Baltimore City. And that organization is select one of the emerging marijuana distributors in America, and they feel an obligation to provide relief for folks who were adversely impacted by the war on drugs. I got a link last week to a document produced by Dr. Madeline Pill from Australia, and it is a culminating product of her work here in Baltimore. And believe it or not, she is very interested in Baltimore. And the title is "The Austerity Governance of Baltimore's Neighborhoods." The conversation may have changed, but the systems aren't changing. And I love disrupting systems. And this work that she has done over about 10 years is absolute essential reading. And if you haven't seen it, I urge you to go read it. Baltimore Children and Youth Fund needs to get some money out for Year Two. And if you guys don't see the importance of saying something about that this summer, a lot of organizations are gonna have or not have programming as a result of receiving or not receiving Baltimore Children and Youth Funds. Please speak up about it, call your council people. I had, on Friday morning, a boat captain, the only African-American licensed boat captain in Maryland, the owner of two tugboats, come to Liberty Rec and talk to some young people about jobs. The brother wants to pay $25 an hour. I can't get young people to do that because they're scared of water. They don't know how to swim. I don't get it. I joined the Navy at 18. Enough said. I applaud you on the new contract for our CEO, but we're giving schools six-year contracts and stuff like that, and we only want to give her four. I love what she's doing here. The thing that's missing out of her contract is a new section, CEO and Community Relationships. Get that? CEO and Community Relationships, I think, is missing from the contract. So, please consider including that. And if you need to know what that means, I'll be glad to spell it out for you. But CEO and Community Relationships ought to be included. And yes, 325 is a lot, but I think she's worth it. But I also, and recognize, not because she's nice to me, but because, because the work that she does is exemplary. And I think we need to keep her here. And whatever that takes to keep her here, I am beseeching you to do. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Truheart. CEO and Community Relationships.
Yes, ma'am.
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to, we do not have information and discussion items listed for this evening, so we're going to go back to the Consent Agenda. And is there a motion to approve those items that were, that are a part of the Consent Agenda? Commissioner Bondima, second? Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor?
Richardson.
Chinia?
Ben.
Seven? Two absent. Okay, and I'm going to go back to those items that we... It is a poll first. Let's, I'm going to look at... Let me do the two items with a student, and then I'll go back. Is that all right? 8.03, Policy JFE. Homeless Students, this is the second reader. Is there a motion for this one? Okay. The second, I'm sorry, Richardson, there's a motion to accept, and it was second about Commissioner Reed, all those in favor? Chinia? Eight, and two absent. I'm getting there. Okay, and then... Policy BGB, a waiver request? Is there a motion? You're going to read, would you like?
I'll make the motion. I hereby move that Policy BGB is waived to permit the board, upon majority vote, to defer the second reading of Policy JKA until no later than the February 25th board meeting.
Okay, is there a second? I'm going to go with Commissioner Lynn, how's that? Okay, all those in favor?
Richardson.
Chinia? I told you it was a leap year. Okay, that was eight and two absent, all right. And then, can I do this other one with the student commissioner? Okay. So, now I'm going back to the others. And is there a motion concerning JKA since...
We just did that.
Oh, it's all done. That was so confusing. Thank you, all righty. Thank you, it was covered, okay. So, now I'm back to item 8.01. Is there a motion to accept? Commissioner Richardson, is there a second? Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor?
Richardson.
Chinia? At seven, favor two absent. That motion passes. And I need to stop here to say congratulations. We are so thrilled that we have approved new four-year contract for Dr. Santalisis. I know it's early, but we wanted to be certain that we were ready for next year. So, we're starting early. And it is just a wonderful feeling for the board, I need to say to you, in terms of knowing that we will have consistency and that we will continue in the work that you've begun. We know we still have a lot of work to do, but we do think we have the right team on board. And with your leadership as CEO, we're looking forward to moving forward. So, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
I just, and I promise I'm not going to like do an Oscar keynote-y thing, like I promise. But I just want to say that, one, I continually say that the reason why four or six years in Baltimore City is something that I want to do. Yeah, you talked to Ms. Truheart. You're so funny. Yeah, you say that now. Is, is one, because of the leadership of this board. This board does not always agree with me, and that is a good thing. And you have heard me say that, that is a good thing. But the laser focus on supporting what is good for students and families, I never have questions about. And that is an incredibly valuable asset to have as the head of any school system. The second piece, I will say, is this really, sure, partially is about me. I could do nothing if I did not have the team of people I have. I can say, at this point in my tenure, we all have off days, including me, but I can't think of any other group of people that I would want to work alongside, whose commitment to Baltimore City, to our young people, is fervent. And the last, you know, God, three and a half years? That went really quickly. Was the foundation laying. Now, we're going for the big prize. And the big prize is systemic chunks of achievement and positive life outcomes for young people in Baltimore City. This was ground, this was ground-laying work. Now, it is how do we increase access? I don't like running into graduates of city schools who tell me they can't get jobs. I don't like running into young people who tell me because they can't pass a literacy exam for job training, they can't. And there are still too many of them. And that's the other reason why I am thrilled to continue to have the privilege of serving in Baltimore City. So, I will try to wrap it up with that. But just to say, I can't, I, there is no other place that I want to do this job. Now, you know, if I win the lottery and it's, you know, a couple million to lay on a beach, that might be a little different, Commissioner McFadden. But there, there's no better place to do this work in Baltimore with no better team and no better board. And I, I thank you all for the privilege of serving in this city. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
So, I wanted you to also hear why we pulled it, because it was important for us to let you know one by one that we support you, and we are so happy that you're willing to stay and you're willing to move the needle that much further in Baltimore City. So, thank you.
And you know, you always say that what we, what we do and what happens in Baltimore, our students deserve it. And so, I think it's, it's really fitting that we can assure our students, our students...
And so, I think it's really fitting that we can assure our students, our parents, our community, that we will have a consistent leader. Baltimore has a reputation of not having people, especially a CEO, that last for a length of time. And so, this is really, I think, good for us and good for our children. And as you say, they do deserve it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay. We are there. So, I need to give you the notice of upcoming meetings, because everything else was passed by consent. The Operations Committee will meet on Tuesday, February 18th, at 10:30 here in the Boardroom. Policy Committee, Tuesday, the 18th, at 3:30 PM here in the Boardroom. Parent and Community Advisory Board has a meeting scheduled for Thursday, February 20th, 6:30 here in the Boardroom. The next public board meeting will be on Tuesday, February 25th. Executive Session is at 3:00, and the public meeting is at 5:00. Teaching and Learning Committee will be meeting on March 3rd at 3:30 here in the Boardroom. I would just, anyone who has been following things, just know that there is a joint hearing on Monday, correct? Monday is the...
President's Day.
President's Day, but the 17th in Annapolis concerning the bills that we like to refer to as the current legislation. And I would encourage anyone who is available to please join our advocates there. If there is no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner McFadden, second. Commissioner Litt, all those in favor?
Say aye.
Oh, thank you.
Richardson.
That's fine. The meeting is adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone.